Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pittsman County's Planning Commission. This is February the first, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mr. Waters.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Oaks.
Present.
Ms. Mese.
Present.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Harker.
Present.
Mr. Haymore.
Present.
Ms. Henderson.
Let the record show Ms. Henderson not present. Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand with me and remove your caps, gentlemen, for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May they see. Hearing of citizens. Is there any citizen here to speak to any matter that is not on the agenda? Okay, moving along. Motion for the approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion for approval of agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moving by Mr. Harker, second by Mr. Oaks. All in favor? Vote, please. Let the record show seven, yes, and one absent. A motion for the approval of a minute. Do I hear a motion for approval of a minute?
Mr. Chairman, I make where I should reapprove the minutes?
Motion by Ms. Mese, so here's second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Ready for a vote? The record shows seven, yes, and one absent. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article five, Division seven of the Pittsman County zoning order, we, the zoning commission, have the empowered to hear, decide specific applications to support the said ordinance to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pittsman County. We must ensure that all decisions and recommendations be directed to those goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interests of Pittsman County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board tonight regarding a zoning case will be limited to three minutes. Seven oh four, case R twenty-one zero zero four is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-two dash zero zero four, John David and Audrey Moss have petitioned to rezone thirty-four point two-five acres located on State Road three-eleven Berry Hill Road in the Westover Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to use for agricultural purposes. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Audrey Moss is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Moss, is anything that you would like to say to the commissioners that is not in our packet?
You can.
You come forward. Yes, ma'am. Come on, Ms. Moss. Good evening.
How are you? I would like to put in a driveway from the Berry Hill Road to the property, and I would like to be able to plant crops on the cropland. I have a farm number. I thought this was foreign property. I have a letter that states I have eighteen point four acres of cropland. And when I went to get a permit for the driveway, they told me I couldn't do it because it was residential. There was no house. So that was my only intention for the property. I have spoke with two of the adjoining property owners, Mr. Sammy Moore. He said he had no opposition. And I spoke with Dr. Frank Maddox last week, and he said he had no opposition.
Yes, ma'am. I have a letter here from, from Dr. Maddox recommending that we make this change for you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Moss? Thank you, Ms. Moss.
Thank you.
At seven oh six, case R twenty-two zero zero four is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of this application to rezone the property from R one Residential to A one Agricultural.
Motion by Mr. Horn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harker. Any further discussion? Not ready for a vote. Let the record show seven, yes, and one absent. Ms. Moss, it has been rezoned. It'll go to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, ma'am. At seven oh seven, case R twenty-two zero zero five is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash two-two dash zero zero five, Miriam Sanchez and Alexis Diaz have petitioned to rezone one point nine-five acres located at fifty-four sixty Renan Road in the Stanton River Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A one Agricultural District to allow for a second dwelling to be placed on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-seven-eight are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Diaz and Ms. Sanchez are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Diaz, you or the lady have any comments or anything you'd like to say to the commissioners? No? We have any questions for the? If not, seven oh eight, case R twenty-two zero five is closed to public hearing. Mr. Harker.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash twenty-two dash zero zero five, I make a motion. We recommend approval of this request to the Board of Supervisors.
Motion by Mr. Harker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion of questions? Not ready for a vote. Let the record show seven, yes, and one absent. Case R twenty-two zero five, one point nine-five acres to be recommended to the Board of Supervisors. At seven oh nine, case R twenty-two zero zero six is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R dash twenty-two dash zero zero six, Horace Gwill has petitioned to rezone zero point nine-nine-seven acres located on Riceville Road in the Banster Election District from A one Agricultural District to R one, R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow for the adjustment of property lines. Once the property is rezoned to R one, all uses listed under Section thirty-five dash one-two-two are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gwill is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Gwill.
Yes.
You have any comments or anything you'd like to add that we do not have in our packet?
No, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Gwill? Anyone?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, the comprehensive plan does designate the future land use as agricultural and rural residential.
Thank you, ma'am. At seven ten, case R twenty-two zero six is closed to public hearing. This was in Ms. Henderson's district. We have someone make the motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that this be referred to the Board of Supervisors as approval from changing A one to R one in case R dash two-two dash oh oh six.
Motion by Ms. Mese, so here's second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harker. Any further discussion? Not ready for a vote. Let the record show seven, yes, none, and one absent. That case R twenty-two zero zero six be recommended to the consistent of zero point nine-nine-seven acres from A one to R one. Thank you, Mr. Gwill. At seven twelve, case S twenty-two zero zero three is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S dash twenty-two dash zero zero three, Firefly Energy LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on three thousand seven hundred and ninety-one point nine-five acres, nineteen parcels of land, located off State Road fifty-eight, South Boston Highway, State Road seventeen thirteen, Rock Springs Road, State Road seven twelve, White Ridge Road, State Road sixty-two, Milton Highway, State Road eight ninety-nine, Cardwell Lane, State Road six fifty-six, Kearns Church Road, and State Road nine seventy pounds Road in the Dane River Election District for utility-scale solar energy facility. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, a representative from Firefly Energy LLC is here to represent the petition.
Representative, I'm here from the, come around, sir. State your name, if you would.
Jase Walker.
Mr. Walker. Welcome, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, commissioners. I would like to submit a couple of letters of support for the project to the record, if I may.
Sir.
Should I deliver those to?
You can give them to the chairman, but he'll need to give them to the clerk after the.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. You go ahead, sir.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Thanks, commissioners, for your consideration of this matter. I want to say thank you to Ms. Ragsdale for her help in us consolidating and submitting this permit to you all for consideration. Also, we'd like to thank Mr. Hunt for his assistance with the siding agreement that we presented to the Board of Supervisors in December that was unanimously approved. So a thank you from the Firefly Energy LLC team and the Recurrent team as well. My name's Jase Walker. I'm a development manager, so I'm in charge of this project. And I'm very happy to be presenting this project to you for a special use permit. I've shared some slides. Hopefully, they came from Ms. Ragsdale to yourselves, so I won't regurgitate all this information or be too redundant with what's in the permit. But I would like to say that Recurrent Energy has a strong history of success in this industry. We've constructed over fifty projects throughout five states that all remain in operation today. Firefly, in particular, is a one hundred and fifty-megawatt project. And we're submitting the special use permit in accordance with Section thirty-five one forty-one of the zoning code governed by Sections C, D, E, and F. And we are confident that we meet the requirements of the code. The facility is not located within one mile of another used utility-scale solar energy facility. And we did, as I mentioned, receive unanimous approval from the Board of Supervisors on our siding agreement that was executed in December. We also meet the twelve requirements of Section thirty-five one forty-one D. We've submitted a site plan. We've adhered to the one hundred and fifty and two hundred-foot setbacks required on property lines. We've also conducted such studies as a glare analysis, for example. We also have submitted a decommissioning plan, which puts us in accordance with Section thirty-five one forty-one E. And lastly, we've met the five requirements of Section thirty-five one forty-one F. All our listed components will comply with UL requirements, and we'll also be sure to comply with state and federal permitting requirements. I did include a couple renderings of what the site would look like before and after the construction of the facility, as well as the implementation of the required vegetative buffers, so I invite you to check those out. I did have two items of feedback on the, on the conditions that were included with the staff recommendation for approval. So I do request that we implement within section, the second condition of height. I request that we implement pole-mounted electric lines, along with the collection yard and substation that are allowed to be above the fifteen-foot height requirement. And this is just necessary lines, on pole-mounted lines, that help transmit our energy toward the substation. Condition eighteen, which is the fire and rescue training, I just request that we revise this to be training regarding solar photovoltaic facilities in lieu of the battery storage facilities. This project does not have a battery storage component, although Recurrent does develop battery storage projects. It's just not a component of this facility. So I think we'd be better suited to provide solar photovoltaic training. Last few pieces I'll mention, and thanks for listening here. We have, as I mentioned, a siding agreement in place with the Board of Supervisors, and so that provides for two point two-five million dollars to be provided to the county by the time the project becomes operational. And then while operational, there's going to be twelve point two million dollars of payments to the county over the thirty-five years of operation of the project. So we feel like we're making a strong financial contribution to the county. And then in regards to jobs, I do want to mention that the construction period of twelve to fifteen months will offer up to three hundred and fifty-five construction jobs. And during the operation period of thirty to thirty-five years, there's going to be four full-time jobs provided by the facility. So in that, I'll close and say thank you very much for your consideration and for listening to me.
Any other, who has a question from Mr. Walker?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. We might have to bring you back, Mr. Walker.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. We have some folks that want to speak to the commission. Mr. Walters, John Walters. Mr. Walters, come around, sir.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. I've been to the office up here several times, and I was told today that I would get to answer questions, ask questions. And then when I got here, I was told I only get three minutes. So I'm just going to speak three minutes because I have about seventeen, eighteen questions that I'd really like to ask, of which I don't get to ask. But I've been told that the representative is going to stay after which and answer some of these questions. Yes. I have been a resident of Cardwell Lane for thirty-three and a half years and have truly loved a quiet lifestyle for many years. I fear that the lifestyle that I have had with my neighbors is unfortunately changed for quite a while. Will be changed quite a while during the deconstruction and the construction of this project. I have been over the said property many times in the previous years that the land was before it is in the ownership of the person right now or the family. I have seen beavers. Yeah, two beaver ponds over there. Deer, squirrels, rabbits, foxes, bobcats, because you don't get to see bobcats, turkeys, and of course deer, if I say that, on this property. I know that if the planning commission approves this, all of that habitat for all of those animals are gone. And I hope you guys understand that, if y'all recommend it. It will be completely gone on Cardwell Lane. I feel like that this is only a for-profit agenda. And money, and money only can be made. There's no, that I can see, there is absolutely no advantage to the residents of Cardwell Lane for this project to be there. I don't anticipate the electricity being sold to the city of Danville. The only advantage would be an increase maybe in taxes. But nobody wants to see it in their backyard, and it's in my front yard, not my backyard. And that's where it's going to be. Like I say, thirty-three and a half years, I'm just kind of upset about it, very upset about it. I think you really don't want to know what I want to say about it, but that's my personal feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Pat Bass. Good evening, Ms. Bass. Welcome.
Okay, I'm Pat Bass, and I'm also a resident of Cardinal Lane. My big concern for this project is I want to know how this affects property values. It's got to devalue residential. I'm in real estate, so that is a concern for me. Does it, does it devalue our residential property? And if this is done as proposed, when you leave the Milton Highway and come onto Cardinal Lane, we had been under the impression that it was going to be a three hundred, a three hundred-foot buffer between the solar panels and the road, which would hide it. But the drawing that I have is showing a hundred and fifty feet, so I would certainly recommend three hundred feet. I mean, I think we've all got questions, since it is a residential area, and I think Firefly should expect that.
Any questions for Ms. Bass? Any commissioner?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. Ms. Valentine. Good evening, Ms. Valentine. Welcome.
I'm just coming, wanting to know the concerns about any hazards that these solar panels can have on our property, particularly our groundwater. On our farm, we grow vegetables that we sell to the community and for ourselves. And I know as far as solar panels construction, sometimes there is a possibility of PFOS contamination. When solar panels get damaged sometime, they can lead to a high level of lead. I know they talk about that going into the landfills. So with the elderly and the adolescents that we have on our farm, I am really concerned about any hazards that this solar panel may contribute. I'm thirty-nine. I've been on Milton Highway all my life, then rode bikes down Cardwell Lane and everywhere. So it is going to be a big difference seeing something like that come into our community. So I just want y'all to take that consideration, take in our, our health and our environment and just our general safety when it comes to these solar panels.
Thank you, Ms. Valentine. Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. Jerry Fitzgerald. Good evening, Mr. Fitzgerald. How are you, sir? Welcome.
My concern is just like the most of the people that live in these, in these residences here. I have ten acres of land, right on Fifty-Eighth Road front. I board horses in the summertime, and I'm concerned about if they get out, the weather, I don't have no control. Normally, they stay in the past, but if they get out, is they going to get over in this solar panel that they're putting up? Or they're going to have it fenced over everywhere, livestock? Also, I grow garden right in that same area. And like the lady said before, I don't know what they're going to do about the gardening or whatever. what they're going to do about the gardening or whatever, whatever goes in the ground. I know the gentleman representative said, the energy is stored in battery power. I don't know whether the batteries corrode. They got to have some type of casualties. Anything built, always have a fault to it. And that's most of my concern about that.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments to Mr.? Thank you, sir. Denise Sheffield. Good evening, Ms. Sheffield. You can take your mask off while you're talking, please, ma'am.
Absolutely. I'm Denise Sheffield. This is Ray. We have just recently purchased our home, sorry, I'm really, from the Andersons, who's actually leasing the property to Firefly, very recently. We had no clue any of this was going on until we received a letter last Thursday. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
And that was on the twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth, the signs went up. So we're extremely blindsided. Now, if we were to look at whatever information we could find, because we have busy lives as well, within the few days that we've even had any idea that this was going on, our home that we just recently purchased is literally a hole in the donut, and completely encompassing what we thought was our dream and our life savings. There is no doubt, and I invited the board members, and anybody that wants to come by and actually see what we're going to be forced to living, like, living right in the middle of. You're more than welcome to come by, because even the little mock-up that I found online doesn't even do it justice. It's, it's literally right out my back door. He's retiring from commercial construction, so our quality of life will be eliminated as, as we had thought or saw or was sold, because we'll be living literally in the middle, dead center of commercial construction. We bought it for this community, and we chose it, and we were very excited and extremely happy up until last Thursday. I'm asking you to reject, if possible, if not defer, to at least allow me time, because I have a list full of questions, and these are just a few that I was able to gather in such short notice.
Yes, ma'am.
We're absolutely blindsided, and we're in a complete tailspin.
We, we purchased this property so we could retire there, and so we could live there the rest of our life.
For the atmosphere and the aesthetics.
And now, it's, we're going to be looking out our windows and seeing solar panels every day, no matter what, completely around our house. No more, no more, we have livestock, there'll be no more wildlife, there'll be nothing, just like the other gentleman, we got turkeys, deer, everything.
Yeah, but, so, yeah. And then we need to have the ability to, I mean, we have questions, even just when, when did this start? I mean, because again, we recently purchased, so...
Thank you, Ms. Sheffield.
And it's, it is our life savings, it's everything that we have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there, is there more that will be?
Yes, ma'am, it'll be a lot more.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Pollan. You can take your mask off while you speak to us. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. It will help me. I received a letter from Recurrent Energy, says it from Texas, but I worked in New York, and I looked it up. It's from Goldman Sachs. He just talked and talked, and then January eleventh, eleven, we went to the, the, let me read it again, we went to the Ringo Fire Department on Tom Fork Road. Well, I got no, got no sense from that. When you ask them something, they laugh. So I says, what are you, what are you laughing at? He said, well, go over there and look on that wall. Only thing I saw was rocks. So, the man named Jase Walker, from Recurrent Energy, so I said, what'd you send me to the fire department for? They bite as crazy as you are. I ain't get no sense. So now, I got this letter to come here. I'm getting no sense from nobody but telling me that they're going to pull up these, these panels and stuff. Well, the farm is next to me. My son was in the military. He has, I forget the name there. He goes to the doctor and sailor, because where he was going wasn't doing him no good. He didn't had a stroke, he didn't had all of this. And they says, this is environmental. Environmental, Mrs. Pollan. Well, I don't want no environmental stuff there. We don't know where he got it. He came back from the service, and it says that it's environmental, these things is up in the, that. And so I says, well, if you're going to put this stuff there, you ain't telling it, you're not telling me. I don't want you to become putting something over next to my farm, and you, and I'm telling you that it's environmental. I got a niece there right around me, and she has it. So I'm just bringing it, this in, because this is called Recurrent Energy, says Texas. But when I went in Ringo, no one spoke but said, look at this thing here, and it was nothing but little rocks to me. So when I asked them something, they grinned. I'm sorry, took a one to three.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Mr. Powell. How are you, sir?
I'm good, you?
Yes, sir. Welcome.
I just want to say that I am so proud to see these people coming in. This industry is going to help with our tax base. Real estate owners in the county are taking a beating to keep the county going, and this is going to help out. And that's about all I got to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Powell. You care to comment on a couple of those questions that those people had about?
Certainly. First of all, I just want to say to everyone who spoke, thank you very much for the feedback for voicing your concerns. I was listening the whole time, taking notes, so, yes, I would like to respond to a few Advantage to residents, yes. These facilities are pretty simple in nature in that it's a pretty substantial cap, capital investment, but there's not a lot of long-term job creation like a manufacturing facility, for example. But, you know, the primary benefit that these projects do provide is the tax revenue for the county to use as they please. So in the slide deck that I had shared, I believe it was somewhere between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars that this property would generate over thirty-five years for the county, and that's going to shift to fifteen point eight million dollars, so just a large influx of funding for the county to utilize as they see fit for schools, roads, emergency services, all without creating an additional strain on those resources. I do want to mention that all of our environmental studies, such as reviewing threatened and endangered species, for example, will be reviewed and approved by the, not only the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, but also the Virginia Fish and Wildlife Service. We are aware that there's, at the moment, northern long-eared bat habitats on, on the property in question, and so we have to be careful about when we remove any timber on the property. It has to happen during certain months where those bats are not present. So I just provide that as an example to say that we have to be very, very careful about what habitats we do and don't disturb in regards to wildlife, and that's something that's front and center for us in our development work. The property values question is, is a good question. We have conducted a third-party study that's in the permit application that used a match pair analysis, so it basically looked at several similar projects and did a before-and-after study of the property values, and there is no material impact to the property values after the implementation of such a facility as this. And in regards to setbacks, I, I actually would definitely like to speak with some of the folks that, that commented after this, this event tonight, to better understand your concerns and see what we can do to accommodate those concerns. I do, I can picture where some of these folks are located, and I, I think we can look at the site plan that we have currently and, and find that some of the setbacks are actually above and beyond even the numbers that were mentioned already. So I do want to say that we can, we can review those together. Just a couple more things. So groundwater was mentioned. The deepest that we go into the soil is for piles that support the racking systems for these facilities, and those go to about eight feet of depth, so there's no point where we're going down into aquifers or anything like that. And in regards to water, one of our primary considerations is stormwater, so we're very, we're entirely responsible for making sure that any water that's used on-site for construction flows in a way that does not impact the local surroundings. So we have to have drainage basins, for example. We have to have silt fences, for example, so we do need to manage our stormwater very carefully, and that's a permit that we have to apply for with the state. We're looking about June to apply for that permit, so, yes, we're very cognizant of not only the wildlife, but also the stormwater, and that all is handled by Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. We'll have to coordinate with them on those matters. I did want to mention about environmental concerns of the panels themselves. They are a fully enclosed tempered glass, which is similar to a windshield, and if you've seen a broken windshield before, then you know that it does break, but it doesn't break, it doesn't shatter like a glass would. It is tempered, so it stays in one piece, and that's, if a, if a panel does break, for example, the glass, you know, breaks into pieces but stays together, and so these, these panels are fully sealed from the time they arrive to our facility to the time that they're disposed of through our decommissioning plan that I mentioned. And I did want to reiterate that there is no battery energy storage for this project. It is only photovoltaic technology that we're utilizing. Yes, and I do apologize if, if some folks feel like they were not made aware of this project. Until recently, we did send out letters, I believe on December twenty-third and twenty-fourth, to all the neighbors of the project, inviting them to the community meeting that Mrs. Polling mentioned, that was on January eleventh. We had about a two-hour session. There were thirty folks that signed into that meeting. We answered their questions and heard some of the concerns at that point as a way to try to start working with folks who might have concerns about the project. But if those letters didn't, you know, got misrouted or something like that, I do apologize, but our intention was to inform everyone as to what we were going for here, so I'll close there. Happy to answer any more.
Just hang on just a second. First of all, you answered one question. Apparently, you are aware of the nineteen conditions set forth by this office?
Yes, sir.
That you've got to abide by.
Yes, sir.
I remind everybody here, the first solar project in Pennsylvania County was in Dan River District, and I'm sorry to say that this commission and this office failed at that project miserably. You go back to, side note, Thomas Edison took over seven, nine hundred and fifty attempts to make a light bulb, and when asked how did he feel about failing, he said, I didn't, but I learned nine hundred and fifty ways not to make a light bulb. So you're aware of the nineteen conditions set forth, that's obvious. I was going to ask, have you had a town hall meeting? Obviously, you have. Have the individuals' concerns been addressed? I don't think so, because obviously they haven't, and I think it would behoove you, and I recommend that you sit down with these people on an individual basis and iron out the differences. I'm a proponent of being able to do with your property whatever you want to do, as long as it doesn't infringe on somebody else. And this thirty-seven-hundred acre project is of overwhelming magnitude in size to this commission, I think. I don't know if my fellow commissioners agree with me a lot or not. I'd like to see more town hall meetings to answer the concerns of the citizens. I think each property owner should be visited personally to look at their individual needs or necessities or concerns. You mentioned using local labor. You know, I've seen two projects in Dan River District, and both of those, local labor, it sounds good, but I ain't seen a damn person from local, I'm sorry, I haven't seen anyone locally on those projects. I see license plates from Texas, Oklahoma, you know, places like that, that I know that these people, that's all they do is construct solar farms, and that's okay. But to say you're going to use local labor and then don't, I don't, I don't appreciate that on a personal basis. Also, I'd like to see some personal citizens payback, you know, some reduced energy bills, maybe. I mean, mine was three hundred dollars last month. I'd love to see a reduced energy bill myself. But I'm also a proponent of the tax base that it provides for this county. I think it's good, very good over the course of thirty-five years versus the A1 agricultural use that it would generate as a tax basis. With all that being said, I'm leaning toward, Mr. Chairman, I'm leaning toward making a motion that we continue this application process to a later time to allow Firefly to address more concerns of those affected people in the area. Like I said, thirty-seven-hundred acres plus is a little overwhelming, and I think we need to dig a little deeper than what we have, and we need some more information, and the citizens that's going to be affected need some more information, too. So I'd like to make a motion that we continue this next month or the month after.
Commissioner, could I make one comment in response, or?
Yes, you can.
I just wanted to mention on the acreage, so we are leasing, there's a little discrepancy. I think it's actually a little bit lower than thirty-seven-hundred, but let's call it thirty-seven-hundred acres. But our project design is more in the realm of thirteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred acres, so we have large parcels, but the actual facility is going to be consolidated to about half of that size, so just wanted to mention.
So that, that in itself, that's confusion, because our package is three thousand seven hundred ninety-one point nine five acres. That's a lot of difference in that and fourteen-hundred acres. I think we've got a lot more questions, and I think the citizens have a lot more questions than to vote on this tonight.
Before you make that motion, let me just, for the, thank you, Mr. Walker.
Yes, thank you.
Y'all, anybody? Wait this.
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple things.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr..
Okay. Mr. Walker, thank you for coming.
Yes.
I'd like to hear a little background on your company, Recurrent Energy. Your projects that you've done, is this the first, or is this the tenth? Successes, failures that you've experienced and so forth?
Yes, absolutely. It's a good question, and yes, Recurrent has been in business for over fifteen years in this industry. Like a lot of similar businesses, the first market was California for utility-scale solar development. So there we have around forty projects that we've developed that remain operational today, and then our business has kind of swung through the south of the U.S. over to this neck of the woods, so we've got projects in Arizona and in Texas as well of this magnitude. This would be our first project to go into construction in Virginia. You may recall, we also have the Blue Ridge Project that we've permitted as of mid- You may recall, we also have the Blue Ridge Project that we've permitted as of mid-two thousand and twenty that we're working on here in this county. So, yes, this is our first project that'll be entering into construction in, in the state. But we, we're very much active in terms of development of projects. And, yeah, I did wanna reiterate that, you know, we hear concerns sometimes about what if these projects cease to operate. From our record of fifty projects, that's just not the case because it's a very hefty upfront capital investment, like I mentioned. But then it takes very little effort or input to keep these projects operational. And so they tend to just do their thing day after day, tracking the sun and generating energy and tax revenue for communities.
This size of a project, if approved, what, what would be the timeline from beginning to completion, barring any, you know, weather-related delays and so forth?
Yeah. Our intention right now is to enter into construction at the start of next year, so January two thousand and twenty-three. Construction would take between twelve and fifteen months, depending on weather, and would end in the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-four, when we would seek to become operational. And then the project would operate for thirty to thirty-five years thereafter. So, yeah, start of twenty-three to early two thousand and twenty-four would be construction. So twelve to fifteen months, and then thirty to thirty-five years of operation.
And has your company, have they surveyed the area? Do you have any idea how many residences may be affected by this project?
I know that we sent out eighty mailers to neighbors of the project to invite them to that community meeting, the town hall. I can't say for certain how many of those properties had residences on them or not, but somewhere around the eighty mark is what we sent to.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any other questions or comment?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dalton.
My question is, you said it was about thirty-seven-hundred acres that y'all was working with? And you're gonna have a fifteen-hundred acre project? Can that be relocated and moved within that property to get away from these owners, these citizens in front of the house and back off the road?
Yeah.
Kind of keep it away from them? I mean, it would.
Yeah. It's a great question, and that, that's one of the notes I wrote down, is just see what flexibility we have. I will say, well, a couple of things come to mind. The reason why there's such a discrepancy between the thirty-seven-hundred and, let's say, the fifteen-hundred that I mentioned is because we have some properties that are only gonna be utilized for a collection line to run through the property to connect areas of solar panels to one another. So that could be three hundred acres that we're seeking to be permitted, but we're only gonna utilize that for a collection line that looks kind of like your electrical line in your neighborhood, for example. So I just wanted to mention a little discrepancy there on the acreage. And then, yeah, when you account for setbacks and wetlands and floodplains and habitats and things of that nature, quickly we start to lose acreage. So that's kind of how you get from, let's, you know, from the thirty-seven-hundred, you take out the collection line-only parcels, you take away all those features that we have to avoid, and that's, that's how you get to that fifteen-hundred mark. But I do, I would like to speak with these folks, understand where they're located, see what we can do. If, I do think, yeah, some of the, some of the concerns we may be able to address by looking at the site plan. But if it's the case that the county stipulated setbacks of one hundred and fifty and two hundred feet are, are not satisfactory, we can certainly look at that.
Of those lines, you talking about above ground or below ground?
Above, above ground generally.
Mr. Chairman, um, thank you. Mr. Dalton, that was a good point, 'cause I was sitting here thinking the same thing. My heart goes out to everybody, but it's one thing in life we can't control is the land that we don't own. And changes do happen in life. It doesn't ever stay the same. However, the couple touched my heart with the doughnut situation. And I was sitting here thinking as well, is there something you can do to help this particular couple, well, all of them? Because I had a case in my district in climax. And we literally had a young girl just like this couple. She just broke down and cried and cried because she, too, was surrounded by the panels. So that company was very professional. They met with her. They placed some of the panels not where she would see them all the time, put buffers up. And she was very grateful and has thanked me many times when she talks to me. So if it's anything you can work out for these people, we certainly would appreciate. And I know they would accept the company more and be friendly with them. So I think it's a good thing that Mr. Horn has recommended more meetings, one-on-one.
Yes, ma'am.
If you have the time.
Yeah. And Mr. Shepherd, I love you. Happy to.
And I think they can go away tonight thinking that you are working with them and trying to be a friend in the community.
Mr. Dobbs?
Yeah. Like everybody else has just said, now's the time to start, to get these problems ironed out before anything else goes on. This project's pretty spread out. You gotta live with DEQ, Army Corps of Engineers, there's a lot of water down in that area that you gotta work around. Kentucky was a learning process for the county. And the county's done a good job of coming up with ordinance for these solar projects. When I fix my breakfast every morning, I'm looking at solar panels. There's gonna be some noise while it's being built. There might be a little inconvenience for traffic, but it's short-lived. They just sit up there. There's no noise. They don't create dust. They don't create trash. They just sit there. The wildlife, I saw a gang of turkeys in a solar farm last week. I have a fourteen hundred square foot brick home in front of the solar farm. Tax appraisal went up sixty-eight percent. So, you know, it doesn't affect real estate values from what I see. This thing will be good for the county. Excuse me. It's good for the landowners, commodity prices the way they are. Farming is, is not much of occupation right now for Pitts-Venier County. And so it's, it's, it's long, is relying on work with people in the neighborhood when they was doing one over the house. They walked the neighborhood to see what the concerns were. And they adjusted some things. And the neighborhood appreciated. And after it's built, I don't think anybody having a problem with it. But it's, it's just getting it, getting it built. They, they have, with the setbacks they have to do, the buffers, shrubs they have to plant, in a couple of years, they'll be grown up to where you don't see it. That's, you know, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs.
Mr., and one more question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Walker, you didn't talk about the maintenance program after the panels are in place. Do you hire someone full-time to check?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, there's an operations and maintenance agreement that has to be in place for every project like this. So they're responsible for making sure that the panels themselves are functional, that the trackers track back and forth each day to maximize the energy creation, that the vegetation stays at bay underneath all of the solar panels, the wires are all in good shape. They also make sure the fence is secure. There was a comment about the D, or the horses, excuse me. Yeah, there's a, a security fence around the perimeter of the project per National Electric Code. So they make sure, sure that that stays secure. And they also make sure that the vegetative buffer stays the way it's intended as per the code.
Thank you.
I just got one more comment, if, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr..
Yeah, after they finish the project, y'all talking about the fence that they have to, they'll have the fence up time to get the solar panels up. I was up there one day, they, they put the fence up, put the fence up, the gates in level. Didn't see any cameras. I slid under the fence. Next day, they sent somebody up out of Louis Gate. So they know what's going on. So just keep that in mind.
Any other comments from commissioners? Before we close the public hearing, let me, for the record, that we had a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Ludlow Quinzenberg opposing this project. Another letter from Sarah Brown opposing this project. And Sarah Valentine and Anthony Brown, these were, and Melinda Williams Gray, these were all given to the, each commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
I got another question, Mr. Chairman. If, if delayed, Mr. Walker, do you or your company have time set aside to meet with each of these citizens? Or how would that work?
If delayed, did you say?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where are you located?
I'm in Asheville, North Carolina. So I, I drive up here pretty regularly. So, yeah, we'll make it a priority.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. That's seven fifty-six case, R twenty-two zero zero three is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn?
Yes, sir. Mr. Hunt?
Mr., just so you go into this with eyes wide open, if you delay it, which is fine, the state code and our local code says that if you don't act on an application within sixty days, it's deemed approved and it moves on to the BZA. So you don't hold up people indefinitely. So just know, we've tried to do some quick math here. If you want to recommend or not recommend this, you're gonna have to act on this at the next meeting. You can't wait two meetings.
I understand that.
I just, just wanna get that out.
I understand that. I just, I wanna give these people ample time to give their concerns addressed.
Sure. Just wanted to let you know that.
Therefore, I'm not comfortable voting yea or nay. I make a motion that we continue this for another month until these folks can have their concerns addressed one-on-one. And I suggest that Firefly do just that.
Motion by Mr. Horn.
May I just say one thing? Is this giving Mr. Walker enough time to have the meetings by next month? Before I second it?
The alternative would be to restart the process if we were gonna wait two months? Is that right?
Just approve.
So you, if you, you have the option to withdraw your application to give you time? If you do not withdraw your application and the planning commission does not recommend either approval or denial, it would move on to BZA regardless without a recommendation so that it, with the recommendation of approval, so that it did not hold the process up? So those are your two options?
Okay. So what I'm hearing is you will make arrangements for the meeting with the citizens and be on the agenda for next month's meeting. Come back to us in a, in a month. Okay, I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any further discussion? No, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes to delay it and one option. This record's there. We have any new business?
We do. Next month, you will have now six cases. There will be five rezonings, and then the special use permit will come back before you next month as well.
Okay. Nothing else?
That's it for new business.
Thank you, ma'am. We stand adjourned.